Oh, there we go. Good evening, I'd like to call the Finance Committee for May 6th to order. I'd like to welcome our two brand-new members. We've got our new committee structure that we're going with. So we have two citizen members that have joined the four aldermen up here. And I'd like to welcome Dennis Degenhart. Welcome. And Adam Wilkett. Welcome, Adam. And you guys have a riveting agenda ahead of you. Item number one is the minutes of the April 15th meeting.
Motion to approve.
We'll start out long. I have a motion to second for the minutes. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number two is a disallowance for the claim of Louise Gundrum for the new members. These are the claims that we get and we have to move on them so that the insurance companies can work together on them. Yes?
On this one, I would like to note as well that it's well outside of the normal claims limit of six months under statute. So it's the incident, I believe, occurred in September of 2017. So it's almost, what, a year and a half ago at this point? So just wanted to note that for the record.
Thanks, Ian.
Motion to deny.
Second?
I have a motion to second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? And that motion carries. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the taxi operations. Presentation by, who's gonna do this one? By Jay Chambo, City Administrator.
Kerry, this is a cleanup document that Kerry has prepared. It formalizes where the money goes. It's basically all the stuff that you've had before you in the past regarding taxi. We do have three new taxis that have just come on and there are three current rusted-out large bus taxis that are out for auction now. That's the A version of this, that the city would receive those funds and they're sold at auction. They go directly into the purchases of the new taxi.
Sounds good. Any questions for Jay at all? If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second?
I have a motion to second. We'll get this down. No further comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? And that motion carries. Being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Adam. I could welcome the rest of the aldermen back up to the...
Easy.
I've seen ya. I would like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, May 6th, 2019 to order and recognize that we do have a quorum tonight of the licensing board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have seven items on tonight's agenda, starting off with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of April 15th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is extension of premise for West Bend Mutual Insurance Company for the Boys and Girls Club Silver Lining 5K to be held on June 2nd, 2019 from 10:30 a.m. through 2:30 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item three is a secondhand article dealer license for Eco ATM LLC inside Kroger Pick and Save North, 2518 West Washington Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? That motion carries. Item three is a secondhand, excuse me, yes, item four is a secondhand article dealer license for Eco ATM LLC inside Pick and Save South at 1629 South Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is a six-month Class B beer license for the West Bend Athletic Association from May 7th, 2019 through October 31st, 2019. The Doc honoring athletic complex areas marked with signs, bleacher area, concession areas, balcony, no carry-ins allowed within Quas Creek Park, 2500 Country Creek Circle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item six is a temporary Class B beer wine license for the Historic Barton Business Association for the Barton Dog Parade being held on June 8th, 2019 from 11:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. on Commerce Street within the designated areas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number seven is approve operators licenses and the list was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And be no further business before the licensing board. I adjourn. And I'd like to call to order the Common Council, City of West Bend Common Council from Monday, May 6th, 2019, to order and recognize that we do have a quorum this evening with Alderman, Chaualier absent and excused. Item number one is a presentation. Mr. Chauai, would you mind stepping up to the microphone? I have a certificate of appreciation we'd like to present to Tommy Chauai and it reads, awarded in appreciation of the generosity conferred upon the 2018-2019 deer abatement program. The City of West Bend recognizes your kindheartedness and benevolence in processing 56 deer in order for them to be donated to local food pantries. So thank you very much, Tommy. It doesn't go unnoticed for folks in the room and folks at home. As mentioned, this is directly related to our deer abatement program and Tommy and the Chauai organization processed those at no charge and all the food, the meat, went to our local food pantry. So thank you very much. We very much appreciate it. Tommy, if you'd like to say a couple of words, if you have anything on your mind, you're welcome to do that.
Yep. The guy worked pretty good together and he brought them deer and they put them inside. Yeah, was a good experience this time. You never know. Could've been bad, but it was very good.
We very much appreciate it. I know that doesn't come free to your organization, so the donation is great.
But you know, you gotta do something for the people that need this stuff, so when it gets there, go fast. Doesn't take long at all.
Thank you very much. Please accept the certificate as a token of our appreciation. Thank you again. Item number two, Roots and Branches Plant Sale and Adopt the Plot Days proclamation reads whereas, Roots and Branches believes in growing a beautiful community today, planting seeds of pride and stewardship to improve the natural environment of West Bend tomorrow. And whereas, our community continues to be committed in preserving and providing the beauty of our neighborhoods by planting flowers, trees, and shrubs within the city. And whereas, Roots and Branches will be holding its annual plant sale at the West Bend City Hall Employee Parking Lot on Friday, May 17th and Saturday, May 18th, 2019. In addition, Roots and Branches will provide the flowers and other necessary materials for the Adopt the Plot Program with volunteers providing the labor necessary to plant and tend. And now therefore I, Craig K. Sedonico, Mayor of the City of West Bend, do hereby proclaim May 17th and 18th, 2019, as Roots and Branches Plant Sale and Adopt the Plot Days in the City of West Bend and I encourage all citizens to support and participate in these programs, helping to make our community a beautiful place in which to live. Thank you once again to all that Roots and Branches does, not only for the Adopt the Plot, but everything else throughout our community. Very much appreciate it. Item number three is proclamation declaring Police Week and that reads, whereas, Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the West Bend Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community members. And whereas, it is important that all members of our community know and understand the duties, responsibilities, sacrifices, and hazards facing their law enforcement officers and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the West Bend police officers are committed to the highest professional standards and working in partnership with our community to meet the challenges of reducing crime, creating a safe environment, and improving our quality of life. And whereas, the City of West Bend is proud of our police officers and wishes to recognize their commitment to the public safety profession. Now therefore I, Craig K. Sedonico, Mayor in the City of West Bend, do hereby recognize May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as Police Week in the City of West Bend and I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation by flying the American flag at half-staff in honor of all fallen officers. Thank you very much. The chief is here tonight and thanks to him and his entire department for the work that they do. Item number four is approval of the regular, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from April 15th, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is approval of the minutes from the organizational meeting of the Common Council on April 16th, 2019.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections on that? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items six through 12 are on the consent agenda. John, excuse me one sec. John, am I correct that item number nine you'd like to abstain from? Are you still on the board?
I'm not on the board.
Hey, congratulations. What are you doing? Okay, item six through 12 are the consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 13 is an ordinance allowing dogs on the Riverwalk. Jay, do we have an updated presentation or discussion on that?
Nope.
Park Rec and Forestry Director Craig Hetner, good evening, Craig.
Good evening. This is the second reading. I'll give you a real quick recap. Basically, this would be amending ordinance number 20 to allow dogs on the Riverwalk and in Old Settlers Park and in Vest Pocket Park. Currently, dogs are allowed in Glacier Blue Hills and Ice Age Trail and in Ridge Run Park, all on leashes. So this would allow those creatures to be in the Riverwalk, Old Settlers Park, and Vest Pocket, all on six-foot less leashes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or span upon anything. Anybody have questions? John?
Yeah, just a comment and the reason why I'm voting against it is if we're going to, I think it's a good idea to put it in the parks and that, but I think we should include all parks, not just one park. And I feel if we're gonna do Ridge Run Park, we might as well do, I know there are trails at Riverside Park through the woods and there are trails through Rhydner Park also. So that's the main reason I'm not going to do it. If we're gonna do one park, I feel we should include all the park with trails and allow people that are close to those parks that they can take their dogs there as well.
Thanks, John. Anybody else? Rich?
I thought we had changed that to a six-year, or a six-month trial basis instead of a
I believe that's how the motion was made, that it goes through end of October or so? Wasn't that right?
Because this one still says a one-year trial.
Would you like to amend that to being October 31st or somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah, that works.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
All.
That motion carries. Item 14 is mayoral appointment of Cindy Wernier and Joseph Lee Gate to the Library Board. Cindy is here tonight. Hi, Cindy. We had four applicants for the Library Board, so thanks to everyone that has interest there. We conducted interviews a couple of weeks ago. I was the Library Board President, Library Board Director, Alderman Jenkins, and myself, and we're excited to welcome Cindy and Joseph with your approvals.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 15 is an ordinance amending section 2.02 of the municipal code relating to regular meetings. Jay, do you have a touch on that?
Yeah, we just say that Alderman Allen brought this to our attention, that it was incorrect in our code stating 7:00 p.m. and the correct time for our council meetings is 6:30 in practice and so we're just cleaning that up. Thanks to Alderman Allen for pointing that out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 16 is an ordinance amending sections 12.02, section 12.02, parent 10, parent H of the municipal code relating to sidewalk cafes. Do we have a presentation?
Sure, we're all prepared to talk about it. I think Ian's probably the...
So I'll kind of summarize, if you have questions about some of the background, Jay or Stephanie or Chief might be better to fill that in. But the city was approached with a request to set up a kind of slightly different type of sidewalk cafe, extension of premises situation that we've had, which is a seating area that is actually across a small portion of the sidewalk from the restaurant. So you'll, there's a walkway and then there's a seating area that has more than just a couple of tables. If you'll think about the tables the Grasshopper used to have outside, right outside in front of their restaurant. The Norbert approached the city with the request to set something like that up. The code did not allow that. This is a proposed revision to the alcohol licensing code, which fills in a lot more information to accomplish this type of sidewalk cafe. Obviously, when you're going away from just a couple of seats along the building into something that's a little bit larger and, you know, you have to actually cross the pedestrian area, we want some additional steps or some additional precautions taken. So we have a more detailed requirement, a little bit more detailed requirement for a site plan that depicts the layout of the, of everything in that area to show how this will work. Because it's not, this isn't, this isn't State Street in Madison where there's a 12-foot terrace the whole way up the street. It's a very select number of properties that this would work for. We have specific language in there that it does not grant exclusive use of the public right-of-way, that they, you can't impede the flow of traffic, and that the licenses may not be valid on specific days if there's events that prevent it. We have specific requirements that describe both the hours of operation, the fact that they're still liable for ensuring that somebody doesn't carry in their own alcohol there. It's placing that burden on them and there's also a liability requirement since they are in our public right-of-way and using that as a extension of their business. Also of note, we do have a requirement that the area must be visible from the windows on the restaurant. We don't want an extension of premises on the side of the building where you can't see anything. So something like the little seating area at Sal's that isn't right in front of the building where you can see everything that goes on, you know, wouldn't necessarily qualify for an alcohol license there. So if there's any questions, we can kind of go through that and any specifics in the ordinance and then...
Questions, anybody? Rich?
Ian, on item 2C, it says licenses issued may not be valid on any day that a permitted special event, blah, blah, blah. What constitutes the "may not"? I mean, is there a rule that says it should not or, I mean, is it kind of gray there?
No, I think it's just gonna be if there's a specific event that shuts down the street completely. So for instance, if it was right in the middle of the, where the Tour of America's Dairy Land was, we might have to give them notice that you're, you're gonna have to move your tables for today. Your, your extension of premises can't operate today.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about, if Riverside Brewery did this with where they are located with the Tour of America's Dairy Land, I mean, they don't have enough space there, but if they had a six-foot terrace there, we might send them a note that says, hey, you have to remove them for today.
Okay, so the, the business owners would be notified by us on the times that it's not available?
Correct, correct. It would be a spec, it would be a parade permit or something that somebody else would, some other event would be pulling that would cause that, or roadwork or who knows?
Okay, thanks.
Nobody else? I've got one question that probably will come up as the individual plans come back here, right? And that is if someone is doing any construction or destruction, if we're removing a tree, for example, to allow this, and they decide a year from now that they no longer want that, can we put in, again, maybe it's the individual approvals, that you restore what you demoed?
Yep.
Maybe demo is a strong word, but you restore whatever you modified to the current condition?
Yep, that can be in the specific approvals. We do have language in here that if you want to install anything, you need to grant a privilege. So for instance, if you were gonna put in any fencing that would be permanently attached, you would need to grant a privilege. Part of the grant a privilege form that we would record says they have to restore it.
So this doesn't specifically approve anybody at this point?
No.
Each individual case comes back and we review that on its own merit?
Correct, because this is such a variable thing. And, and with all alcohol licensing, there's broad ability to place restrictions on, on any type of new licensure. Can't go back to ones that are already granted, but anything new you can restrict, almost any reasonable way you can see fit.
Well, in general, I think it's a great idea. The limited amount of days and nights that we have, that it's suitable to be outside. I think if we can encourage it, that's great. And then knowing that this really is a mechanism for the public to consider this and then come back with their own specific plan. I like it. Any other?
And this is not unique. I mean, Madison, State Street, if you've, if you've been up State Street, it, almost every restaurant there has it. The one that I largely plagiarized a lot of the language to get started off of was from Waukesha, so this isn't like it's groundbreaking material here. This is something that many communities have and we already have in a, you know, in some version with the sidewalk cafes, so.
Just so Waukesha doesn't send us a bill for their legal fees.
I changed it.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Good luck to any of our restaurants out there that would like to entertain this option. It should be exciting. Item number 18 is disallowance for claim of Louise Gundrum.
Motion to deny. Second.
All those, motions are made and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Sorry, I got too quick with my checkmarks on the agenda here. Item 17 is discuss a request by the West Bend Theater to allow use and modification of city-owned lands and Main Street right-of-way. A presentation by somebody, I presume.
There's a representative from MSI. Jay's gonna approach the podium. I can just introduce it, that this, this item is before you for, for two main reasons. And you have it in your packet, the proposal to change the right-of-way area, the curb line in order to protect the marquee, and then also to begin the conversations on the alleyway between Husars and the theater and the future of that alleyway and how it plays into what the theater is proposing.
Thank you very much, Jay Craig with MSI General representing the owner. Jay's exactly right. We've talked, there's a basket of issues that we're working with the city on, one of which the, it concerns that the curb line outside of the front of the theater. Really what we're concerned about is safety there. We've got an opportunity with renovation of the theater to create a drop-off area for a lot of the senior citizens that are gonna be attending much of the programming that's gonna be going on at the theater. And we'd like a safe zone for them to be dropped off. That is gonna require some type of modification to the curb and ideally an elimination of that center island as well. We'd like for the city to work with us in considering what, what that looks like. We did submit some engineering originally. That was just a, that was just a thought. That's not anything cast in stone. We're certainly open to some type of changes to that that works for everyone, but really we'd like a, we'd like to propose a safe area for drop-off in front of the theater there. As far as the, do you want me to go on? Okay, as far as the, as far as the alleyway goes, we had talked about a number of different ingress and egress options with, for the theater. It's unclear whether or not an egress requirement from the balcony would be required given the other egresses that are available. However, I think the investor group has decided they'd like to keep that fire escape as a safety, a high-safety item. And so that leads to a number of questions. The fire escape is, obviously, has been there long before the alleyway was there, but it is in the city over, you know, it's over the city-owned property. So how does that come down? What does that look like? We understand there's a number of options to potentially renovate the alleyway and that will obviously impact what that fire escape looks like going forward.
Jay, it's a discussion item tonight. What are you looking for from the council?
Mostly awareness at this point. If there's any questions or strong feelings one way or the other regarding the alley or the future of the alley. It's been closed up for some time and the Parks Department's looking at access to the river with, with the new Riverwalk project. It's, the design of that alleyway is included in the Riverwalk West design, so it's, the thought process is to, to open it back up. And the theater has approached the, the city as far as how its use and their use of the new building might play into that. So again, awareness is the first thing, that, that conversation's taking place. The city council can, will have control over that alleyway in the future and, and its design, ultimately its design, and how it's rebuilt, if it is to be reconstructed or not, and the access that Jay mentioned plays into that. And then the second piece is again, the, the initial peak at the road curb line reconstruction, if any, is to be, is to be completed out there. We'll work with the theater and Max, our city engineer, will be certainly involved from a professional standpoint as to assessing the impacts to transportation and removing that center island or not and how that all plays in. But just an initial peek, it's also on the Plan Commission agenda tomorrow.
Chris?
I guess I had more of an architectural question. Excuse me. So by removing that island in the middle, I mean, does that open us up to anything? Because I agree that it gets congested and I'm just trying to look at the picture here and picture driving a car through. I guess was there an architectural reason that the island was there in the first place? I don't know who would answer that, but I just didn't know if there's a safety reason or any of that.
It's actually a traffic circle, so it, it was constructed with pinch points at both sides of it to slow traffic and then to allow traffic to maneuver that entire circle area. And that's where Max will have to come in, you know, if it's to be proposed to be removed, that he's gonna have to weigh in on that.
So then if we remove that, does that force us to shrink the road width? Yeah?
All, well, I don't know the answer to that, but yes, all good reason to have traffic engineering involved.
Yep, thanks.
Rich?
I'm actually excited by the engineering plans that I've seen here. I mean, the West Bend downtown is growing, not only the theater, but also around the theater. So I think having those drop-off areas, having it wide enough that we can have that drop-off area for the theater as well as some of those other businesses, I think is gonna be key for us. And I think opening up that bump out, that bump out gets really tight in there, especially with the number of SUVs we've got out on the, on the roads these days as opposed to the small cars. So I'm actually very excited by it and looking forward to seeing what further designs would look like on that.
Anybody else? I would just ask staff to consider, and I'm, sure, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say SUVs don't bother me a whole lot, but I went through there just to take a look at what was proposed. And there was FedEx truck, a truck from UPS, a mail delivery vehicle, and a, a one, or all-in books, all had vehicles parked in that area. And it was difficult to get through. So it's, it's not SUVs that bother me, it's when you get big trucks working in downtown, it tends to get very, very crowded and very confused very quickly.
Justice?
Yeah, I'm inclined to agree with Rich, too. I'm really excited about this project, and I'm, I'll be interested to see what kind of design we can come up with, hopefully make it coincide with future renovations to downtown in the street, too, so, very exciting stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last question, and this is to the MSI rep. The fire, fire escape that goes, leads down into the alleyway, is that currently functional?
No.
Okay, so it, what, goes down onto the roof?
It's not operational.
Okay.
So it doesn't go, right now it doesn't go anywhere.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Good luck. My only comment regarding the, the center island would be, as I think Justice touched on, I'm hopeful that once the west side of the river gets redone, that our, our next focal point is what to do with downtown in its entirety. I don't know if there's gonna be any feathers ruffled by removing the island. We've historically removed at least one in the past, but I would say just anticipate maybe some questions from folks that are interested in revitalizing the entire road, utilities underneath it, pavers or no pavers. Anytime we've touched anything downtown, it's either made some folks happy, and some feathers ruffled, or vice versa. Just know that, but I, I think it sure sounds like anything that we can reasonably do here to help support your efforts is, is certainly gonna happen.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet. Under closed sessions, items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. Item number nineteen is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is regarding a request for letter of intent, city-owned lands in Tiff twelve, southern four point four five acres of tax key number two-nine-one point one-one-one-nine point one-three-two point zero-zero-five-five.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie, may we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddle?
Aye.
Alderman Kissed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item number twenty is entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is regarding a request for a letter of intent on city-owned lands, again, in Tiff twelve. This is the northern three point two-six acres of tax key two point, excuse me, two-nine-one point one-one-one-nine point one-three-two point zero-zero-five-five.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie, if we could have roll call vote again.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddle?
Aye.
Alderman Kissed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item twenty-one, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, is regarding a letter of intent.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Stephanie?
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins?
Aye.
Alderman Caston?
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster?
Aye.
Alderman Maddle?
Aye.
Alderman Kissed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And just for the record, I'd ask if we could handle the northern section first, as I'll abstain from participating, deliberating, or negotiating in that. If we could handle that item first, then I can come in for the other two. Go get 'em, guys. Good evening. I'd like to reconvene City of West Bend Common Council, and address item number, item number twenty-two, our table for this evening, and plan to bring that item back at a future council meeting. Alderman Hugaster, if you could handle item number twenty-three, as I will abstain from discussion or voting.
The authorization to enter into letter of intent regarding purchase of city-owned property in Tiff number twelve, southern four point four-five acres of tax...
No, we're on, we're on twenty-three, northern three.
Okay, same first part. Northern three point two-six acres of tax key one-one-one-nine point one-three-two point zero-zero-five-five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Have a motion and second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same side? Motion carries.
Thank you, Steve. Item number twenty-three is a decision regarding a letter of intent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments?
It's actually item twenty-four.
Sorry. Item twenty-four, decision regarding a letter of intent. Thanks, Hoogie. Same motion and same second, even though it's item twenty-four. How do you go with that? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And under reports is item number twenty-five, a report regarding the library board. Chris?
Yeah, I forgot what I was gonna talk about. It's been so long. The last meeting wasn't too bad. We talked a little bit about there's a sprinkler leakage in the library that we're investigating, getting some bids on. It's not that big of a deal, so we're handling that. We did give special thanks to Al Young and Jim Kneppler, who have been serving our board for quite a while, and then just chose to hang up their hats, but they were both, both great members. Jim was our finance guy for quite a long time, did a great job with that role, and Al definitely took marketing the library to, to its maximum extent, and we really appreciate both their, their works on the board. And finally, Craig Hepner from the Parks Department attended our meeting, and told us a little bit about his idea to extend Parks and Rec classes to the library facility. As many of you know, the library basement is gigantic, but very, very unused. There's some reasons for that, but in talking to Craig, he had some ideas to make it a little bit more user-friendly, and possibly be a good partnership between departments. So at this point, we're just finding out some more information, seeing how we can help each other out, and go from there.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions for Chris? And item number twenty-six, a report regarding the Park and Rec Commission by Alderman Hugaster.
Our meeting was canceled.
That was quick. Good one to end on. Being there, no further business before the common council. I adjourn. Are there any announcements tonight?